Good morning.
Hi, everybody.
Morning.
Is everybody coping with the summer officially now being over?
I thought it was unofficial.
Unofficially, yeah, you're right, you're right.
And I haven't not acknowledged it yet.
I won't either.
Morning Ezra.
Morning, how are you all?
Good.
Excellent.
Button my shirts so I look official.
Yeah, good. So Tom, before we start, I guess we're still waiting for Jim, obviously. Our Dana, our client, he's, he's in, he's got another engagement and he's going to be joining us at, he thinks at about 11 o'clock. He was hoping we could start with civil and landscaping and then end up at, at architecture, if that's okay with you and Jim.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with that, so.
Okay.
Let me text Jim, see what he's up to. He's jumping on.
Sounds good.
Sorry, everybody. Somehow or other, I got my schedule mixed up. Let me put in my magic number here. I was worried about everybody else, should have been worried about myself.
I appreciated the reminder, though, Jim, it was helpful for me.
I guess I didn't look at my own information close enough. I had it in my schedule for 11 o'clock and I was still taking notes.
Yeah.
All right, so this is the subcommittee meeting for 596 North Avenue to continue the discussion we've had and to follow up with further work, basically as dictated by the zoning board at our last hearing. So with that, Tom, would you read the the invocation, so to speak?
Sure thing. Consistent with the governor's always extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to meet, to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or a microphone or your computer, you may use the following dialing number 1-301-715-8592, meeting ID 840-5482-5479, passcode 709990. Please only use dialing or computer or not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodation and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternative format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renault, town engineer 712466308, as far in advance of the event as possible. Every event will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove any accessibility barrier for.
Thank you. Um. All right, so at this point, I guess there were a number of issues, basically, I think that the board expressed that they wanted to see further either coordination on or material for, basically, for the next meeting, which is next week, I believe. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jesse, basically, to sort of call people up as, as we have in the past. And I think we also, I think there was some comment basically on coordination between landscape, architecture and civil engineering. And hopefully, maybe there's been TAC discussion, which we might get some further information. On the other hand, maybe we've got to wait till the zoning meeting. But with that, Jesse, I'm going to turn it over to you and let me know who you want to share the screen with.
Okay, great, thanks, Jim. I was, I was mentioning to Tom right before you, you got on, Jim. Our client Dana is going to be coming on at about 11 o'clock. He had another appointment this morning. And he, he requested if, if it's okay with you that we start with civil and then architect, and then landscape, and then finish up with architecture at the end, although it looks like he's jumping on now, so maybe that point is now moot.
See, I was supposed to be on 11 o'clock.
You and he were simpatico on that. On the, just to pick off the low hanging fruit, though, Jim, we, we haven't had a chance to meet with TAC yet. I, I don't believe they met in August, as far as I'm aware, but we can get on the, the next meeting for them at the end of September, I believe. And we've been, we've been in touch with our traffic engineer and it's just a matter of setting up that meeting, so we'll go ahead and do that. Dana, are you, are you on now?
Yes, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
We're just getting started, so we haven't talked about architecture first, but maybe, maybe it makes sense to start with civil anyway.
Yep, no problem.
So why don't we go to Chris then to take it away?
All right, let me give Chris a opening air. You're open, Chris.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to share my screen and go right to our updated survey layout plan. You can see the proposed development tucked, tucked away here in the front part of our five acre parcel. And if I zoom in, I can walk through the plan updates since the last time you saw the civil engineering plans. We've been working closely with the architectural team and landscape architecture to incorporate all the elements that are shown on the landscape plan, obviously, including the sidewalk and the approach to the front of the building along North Ave. Also, some of these outdoor amenities, walkway, sitting area and, and fire pit area along with some seating areas and a bike, a position for a bike rack on the property. What we've tried to do with this latest go around is to incorporate all those elements and to also try to address comments that we received from engineering related to stormwater management and utilities questions that came up. I sat down and met with Bill Renault earlier this month to go through his comment letter so that we were able to get on the same page on what his expectations were relative to utilities, stormwater and some possible offsite mitigation that he indicated that he'd like us to consider as part of this project. So let me first take you into the parking area and just update you on a slight reconfiguration. So as we enter the site from North Ave, all of, all of this parking area and parking field remains the same coming down. As we come down, we've designated four spots down on the south end of the parking field here as visitor spaces, just to sort of have a placeholder for them, exactly operationally how that will work out. You know, time will tell. As we come to the end of the parking field here, we've also designated two electric vehicle spaces. And we were also able to squeeze in an extra space here for live parking slash delivery. This reconfiguration resulted in sort of squaring off of a few items to, to make construction a little bit easier. And what you'll see here is that we've straightened out our retaining wall across the back of the property here. Just to make these lines straighter, building a retaining wall with exact offsets from the wetland, you know, makes for a lot of jigs and jogs. If I flip over to a previous iteration, you'll see how the retaining wall here, you know, it's very difficult to build the wall that way and it's, it's much cleaner looking and, you know, we straighten out these lines. So what we've done is that in some areas, we're more than 25 feet away from the wetland, especially in this area here. And as we come around the bend here, we straighten the parking field out here, as you can see on the revised plan. Now, this allowed us to take the dumpster from this part of the site and move it to the end of the parking field here. So in all case, in all areas that we had, I think a pinch point here where we were as close as 15 feet to the wetland and there are other areas were more than 25 and then somewhere between 20 and 25 along these other sections here. And we believe that, that this is a plan that can be supported by the conservation commission and by the regulations that govern the wetland protection, if you will. So that's the update on, on parking. This addresses a TAC comment here along with the visitor parking spaces, the drop off and EV space designation. We've indicated that, you know, where the charging pedestal is going to go for handicap accessibility, which we've talked about quite a bit. This is our, what we consider our main entrance where our handicap parking spaces are in the back of the property. And then along our sidewalk, as one travels from the back of the building around to the front, you have a couple of options here. There's a ramp that comes up that allows folks that might be in a wheelchair or need handicap access to enter the building at this location, or they can continue along the sidewalk to the front of the building where we're, we are proposing to build a new sidewalk within the right of way of North Ave. We've added wheelchair ramps designated areas. And then to respond to a comment, a recommendation made by the town engineer, we've also designated a proposed crosswalk across North Ave, which will, will need wheelchair ramps on either side. And the other element that's associated with this is that we're proposing to install two rapid flashing beacons, which you've seen, I'm sure, in other parts of the town at these crossings where someone can push a button and, and activate a flashing light here and here in order to warn drivers of pedestrian crossing. So those are the sidewalk access and parking field changes that we've made. If I were to now flip, flip the page to our utilities, sitting down with Bill Renault.
Can I ask a quick question about the crosswalk? Was there a reason they wanted there and not closer to one of the corners or closer to, um, like where your walkway comes out?
So we talked about that with our design team. One idea was to put it directly in front of the building. But we thought that the flash, rapid flashing beacons might take away from what the, what this entrance looks like. And then as we came over to the other side, let's say of Willard Street here, we knew we needed to get either to this side of Willard or to the other side. Moving it closer here puts it, you know, directly in the path of some of our outdoor amenities and we wanted to discourage just any pedestrian from, you know, having a straight shot, let's say, over to our fire pit or our outdoor amenity. So we, it's still, it's still across our front edge. It still serves the purpose. It still gets someone from the sidewalk on, on this side of North Ave, you know, over to the new sidewalk. So that's the reason why I ended up over here.
Ezra, I, I had the same thought you're thinking of basically at the entry, but then I thought, you know, the next sidewalk down is near the near the salon at the far end. So I was thinking by pushing this closer to this end of this project, it gives another access to the other two buildings, basically, to get across. So it gets shared. Instead of being prioritized for this building, it, it gets more prioritized towards the other buildings as well.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. As long as there's nothing offensive about it to the, you know, what you're sort of pushing it to the edge of your property. And I'd be, want to be sure that nobody, you know, that's not like a house over there on Willard that is like angry. You got this flashing light in front of them now or something.
No, it's, it's actually in front of the office buildings.
Good, okay. Thanks, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, so this is, this is our utility plan. You may remember there's a few things that have changed on, on this plan. We've squared off our underground stormwater management area here for, for a couple of reasons. Number one, to increase the size to try to provide some additional mitigation. It also allowed us to free up this landscape area here, which is available now for planting. We also found out that as part of the water main improvements that were recently done in various parts of the town, including North Ave, there is a, a new 12 inch water main that's in the street in addition to the existing eight inch water main. And so what Bill Renault explained to me is that the purpose, the primary purpose of the 12 inch water main was to help improve fire flow along this corridor. And so as new projects come onboard and ours being, you know, that, let's say, one of the, one of the newer ones, they are asking the folks that are building these buildings to tie in the fire line to this new 12 inch line. And then the domestic line would tie into the eight inch line. So that's what, that, what we've done here to show that, that difference. So that's our water connection along with our proposed hydrant in front of the property. And then sewer, sewer service hasn't changed. Here's our, our main sewer line. We've been working closely with Wakefield Gas and Light with regard to our electric service. And they've indicated to us that their intent is to, is to run underground utilities from the overhead pole line, starting at the front of our project and come down to a proposed transformer location in this landscape island here. You can see that we've, we've shown ballards per their, per their request. If I can switch over to the topographic plan real quick here, which is a little bit busier with the additional topographic lines. One of the challenges that we've had on this project is the fact that it was determined that the stream that flows through our property in this direction and empties out into North Ave is a tributary to Lake Quanapawit, which has been determined to be a tributary to Hox Pond, a, a public water supply that serves the city of Lynn over on, off of Walnut Street in Lynnfield and Saugus. And so because of that, there are some protective zones that extend from the bank of these tributaries. There's a 200 foot setback that comes onto our property, well onto our property over, over here. This is a the extent of this zone that's commonly referred to as a Zone A. And there are certain stormwater management elements that are not allowed to be constructed within Zone A, specifically stormwater management areas like our underground stormwater management area here. We recognized this possibility when we first submitted the plan, which is why the stormwater management area ended up over here. And as the plan started to become further developed and we wanted to have the ability to have handicap accessibility across the front of the project here, we added some additional hardscape and found ourselves in a situation where we have some stormwater in the front of our building flowing out in the direction and onto North Ave where that doesn't happen in the existing condition. In the existing condition, the lay of the land is such that all of this land, you know, slopes back away from the street and towards the wetland here, ultimately ending up in the same place. But this small watershed out front has caused us quite a bit of trouble because we, we can't build even a rain garden, let's say, out here in these, in these landscape islands, because it would be a stormwater, a structural stormwater management area inside of a Zone A. And so we have a slight increase, albeit small, for each of the design storms out to North Ave. We discussed this with Bill. And Bill recognizes the challenge here and he's asked, he asked us to do a couple of things. He said, look, I, I, I understand it's probably not a lot of water, but you need to analyze the existing structures that collect stormwater in North Ave in front of the property and make sure that this additional water can still be handled by the street drainage. So we've done that. And then if we do end up with an increase, if you can't compensate, overcompensate on your own site, then what Bill is, has suggested is that, is that we contribute some money to another project that he, he has on the books where he's proposing some stormwater management improvements near the lake, in the watershed of the lake. And whatever our increase is here, he proposes that we help offset it on another project and contribute some money to help build those stormwater management areas on another project. And he mentioned, I think it was the Washington Ave or Washington Street Ball Field. I have it in my notes, but I don't remember the exact. Um, I have it in my notes, but I don't remember the exact name, uh, where it might. Might work, work nicely. So we're still, uh, we're gonna be submitting this, this revised plan set after our subcommittee meeting and, uh, uh, today. To Bill so that, uh, so that we can further those discussions.
Um, Chris, though, how does this impact the COMCOM? I mean, they, they, they're in control of this, not Bill, aren't they?
So are you referring to, um, stormwater management in general?
Well, no, I'm, I, I, because it's within this zone, basically, this A-zone. And the problem is created by what we've done here is, is not this, uh. A discussion with COMCOM?
We are gonna have a discussion with, with COMCOM, but it's not, um, the fact that we are within the Zone A here. Believe it or not, that, that's not a wetland resource area, uh, that's identified in the Wetlands Protection Act. There's no question that we're working within a hundred feet of a wetland on this project. Um, but, uh, typically, uh, Bill Renault, as the town engineer, uh, does the, uh. Let's, let's call it peer review for all stormwater reports, uh, for COMCOM, for Planning Board, uh, for Zoning Board of Appeals. And so, uh, he acts as the reviewer of our stormwater report, you know, for the, for the Z B A and for the COMCOM.
Um, another question is, these, um, stormwater drains that are on the street. Where do they discharge to?
Sure, uh, no surprise, right? So let me explain here. There, uh, Catch Basin here, Catch Basin here, Catch Basin here. This Catch Basin connects to that one and then over to a drain manhole in front of Willard Street. Similarly, Catch Basin here crosses the street to another Catch Basin and then over to this drain manhole and then down Willard Street and down to the lake.
But it doesn't in, does it intercept this line that goes under, under?
Yes, yes, so, um, so under.
They all become one.
Eventually, they all become one where the water turns down Willard Street. So it, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense, right? Yeah.
I, I kind of figured maybe that was what was going on, but I just thought I'd ask the stupid question.
Yeah, it's, it's not a stupid question. It's a very unusual situation that we have here where. We have the ability to control the stormwater on our site, but we're not allowed to. Even though in the end, the water's still gonna end up in the same place. So Bill, Bill's idea is a good one, I think, in that, uh, you know, he has another project on the other side of the lake. Uh, near the ball fields where, where we'll be able to make that better. To offset, um, the slight increase that we have along, uh, along North Ave. The only alternative would be, you know, to, to remove some of these hardscapes. And, um, and not, and not have them here in front of the building.
Well, why not, why not on this little, uh, moon-shaped section in front, which you're talking about, a, a garden type of thing? Um, couldn't, couldn't you just dump that into, or perhaps some drainage to go over? Into your, uh, underground system and under the driveway?
Yeah, so, um, it's great, grade-wise, um, it, uh. Let's just take that back for a minute. Uh, grade-wise, I don't think that works, but I understand what you're saying. I can't get, um, the water from, from here to over here, uh. Grade-wise, if I remember correctly, uh, because we also looked at that possibility. Um, I. It's been a while since we talked about that, uh, Jim, but we, uh, we looked at that early on. Uh, but I don't think I can get this water over to here.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll double-check that.
Yeah. I, I just, I, I mean, it, it is also where the trees are going, so we wouldn't want, we wouldn't wanna swamp the trees either.
Uh, you know, when you say swamp the trees, it, it's such a small amount of water. It's, um. It's kind of silly. If I were to show you the, uh, the watershed for this thing and the, and the peak flow, it, it, they're really, really small numbers.
Yeah. That's unless you live in Rhode Island.
So, so, uh, Jim, this needs to be, I know you guys got some work to resolve this with, with Bill. But Jesse, I guess I'm gonna look to you to memorialize this some way in a condition. If there's gonna be some future payment to some future project, uh, with Bill. Uh, if I could put that in your, uh, your court, um, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, yep, I'll put that on my radar.
Uh, so that, that pretty much brings, brings me up, up to date on, uh, on civil site.
So where, um, I assume part of the issue, I think, at the Z B A meeting was coordination between. This, the architecture and landscape. Um, do I assume that all of that, by the time we get through, has been tied off? And everything's together?
Yeah, the answer is yes. Uh, now that being said, uh, I think you heard me mention, um, uh, bike rack. Um, that bike rack location is a little bit in flux, I think, um. Uh, I think right now it's shown on the front of the building, but there's, uh, I think we're thinking about moving it to the, to the rear. That's right. That's something that, that Elliot's gonna be working on, uh, to see if it makes more sense to move it behind the building.
I, I would highly recommend it. I, I don't see it at the front, quite frankly. Um, and I think if you were to listen to Chip's comments. Um, basically, he doesn't either, so I don't think that's an award-winning location.
Yeah, and now that we've squared this area off a little bit, uh, you know, we have a bit of area to, to work with back here.
Yep.
Uh, another comment I, I got from our meeting, Jim, was I don't know if it would be on this document or another one, was the curbing, granite curbing?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you, Tom. Uh, I, that's one thing I forgot to mention. Uh, let me show you the latest and greatest information. Uh, so we have proposed to, uh, replace the existing Cape Cod berm. That's along our frontage here with vertical granite. It's about two-hundred-and-forty feet in length. And then we're proposing to have our roundings be vertical granite curbing. And then we proposed to transition from vertical granite curbing to concrete curbing, um, inside the rest of the site. Uh, in the past, we had, uh, shown, uh, bituminous, uh, berm. Uh, but Mr. Lopez, uh, has indicated that he said really good luck, uh, using the concrete curbing product. On other projects, and that's what we are proposing at the present time.
Uh, you can argue that, but I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna get extreme resistance. Uh, good luck. We've been doing granite curb all, in all of our projects because of the, the level of maintenance, basically, that we anticipate. Or the plows breaking them up or whatever, so, uh, it's not a winner with the board.
One issue, Jim, one issue we're having, Jim, right now is even getting granite curbing.
Um, I, I, I know that, uh, because, um, I've heard from others, basically. And I talked to Renault because he's doing a lot of granite curbing and this is probably part of the problem. Um, basically, he's had some difficulties. But doing it at the right time, getting the sources, he doesn't seem to be having that big a difficulty, but he knows, know. That there is some lag time here, basically, compared with what you, what you normally expect. And it may be because of the demand is so high. Who knows what's driving it? Um, and this project hasn't even started, so, you know, once, once it does start, then maybe one of the things you gotta preorder. Is granite curbing, just so you have it when you need it. Others, others that are coming to me and making the same comment. And I've told them they have to go back to the board, but I've also told the board what I, what Bill has said to me. They're, they're ordering it late, you know, they're ordering, they're ordering it in a sequence they normally have no problem with. It just means that, like some other things, basically, you have to order them early. Earlier than, than maybe you normally have. Maybe it's six months out or it's three months out, but. Understand, we understand that there's a problem, but it's all in the sequencing, basically, of your orders. So I don't think it's gonna hold much water, quite frankly.
Is this, uh, is it a town requirement or is just, just, um?
It's, it's, uh, it's a Z B A, uh, requirement that we've made with every project, basically. I don't know that there's a town requirement. I do know that Bill, in talking to Bill about another project, basically. He basically said, we wanna see granite in that look, in that location. It's already been approved for granite. You know, this person wants to come back, basically, as a minor mod and wanna do something else. And I've told him, you know, you can go for it if you want, but I'm gonna tell you right now is when I've talked to Bill. He says it's not that big a problem, but it is a problem at the same time, so. You know, you can go, this person may end up going before the board or just, you know, biting the bullet and saying, okay, it's, I'm not gonna have this finished off right away. If he's not gonna have it finished off and he wanted to open his project. He could probably come to the board and say, you know, running behind, I wanna get the C of O and open this place. But I'm just gonna, you know, can I hold back on getting the curb in by, you know, a few months or something like that? And work out a deal with the board as long as the granite goes in. So that, I'm just telling you what's happened in the past and what I've heard recently, and I don't disagree, there's some issue out there with supply.
Okay.
We, we obviously know that this is a, a important issue to Chip. Um, well, I think what we're trying to do on this, Jim, is to. Find a, a balance. You know, there's a lot of big-ticket items that Chris just talked about with the crosswalk and the beacons. Those are, those are fairly expensive. Um, so, this being an affordable housing development, where, you know, there's a lot of asks out there. So we're trying to, to do what we can while balancing some cost savings where it's not something that affects the town. Um, similar to what we did on Tarrant Lane where the board approved Cape Cod berm. Inside the site, vertical granite on the outside. This is a, a bit of an upgrade, I would say. But, um, we'll, we'll, we'll go through it with the board. We're aware it's, uh, it's a, it's an issue for them and, and that they definitely prefer vertical granite.
Yeah, we're, both Tom and I are just telling you, this is where the board hangs. Uh, and it's still up to you to convince.
Understood, understood. So Chris, is that it for you, for your updates?
Uh, yes, um, there, uh, since we were talking about off-site contributions, uh, uh. There were a couple of other items in, uh, uh, Bill Renault's letter. Uh, he was looking for a contribution, uh. Towards the recent water main improvements, a monetary contribution, and then a monetary contribution to off, to offset traffic impacts. I don't know where those monies are gonna come from on a project like this, but, um, uh, I think that's a problem for our client. Um, uh, but we'll have to figure out, you know, I don't think, I don't think Mr. Lopez has a problem contributing. As long as it, uh, it still makes the project, you know, financially feasible.
Okay.
And just before we go to, I guess, Elliot, I don't think Elliot has an updated plan to show today. But just before we move on past the civil and traffic and, and mitigation efforts. Jim, I just heard back from our traffic engineer while we were talking about Chris's plan. He's gonna reach out to Lieutenant Anderson of the T A C and try to get on their agenda for this month. They are meeting this month. And I know that they're meeting next month as well, so, uh, we'll let you know hopefully by the Z B A meeting next week, wh- whether we're on their agenda.
Yeah, cuz, yeah, Z B A's gonna wanna know.
Yep.
Obviously.
The T A C had a num- like Chris mentioned, a number of, of asks for the, uh, visitor spaces, the electronic, uh, electric vehicle charging station. So they're gonna wanna see that we've implemented those as well. So it's been a while since we were before them, probably at the time. So Elliot, do you, do you have any updates to, to discuss on, on your end, or should we go past you to, uh, to Peter and his guys?
Yeah, the only updates, as I just recently got the plan, um, I've been modifying the civil plan. Reflecting that, the new position of the retaining wall and et cetera, so, um. The, the landscaping around the building, ninety percent of it will remain the same. Just make some slight adjustments relative to, um, the transformer area that. If that changed a little bit and then in the corner where the dumpster used to be, I still have a tree there and I think we can put a tree there. Um, the bike rack is gonna be moved to the rear of the property where Chris had indicated, kind of at the end of the sidewalk there. I think that makes most, uh, makes the most sense. Um, and then as far as the configuration of the wetland trees, those are gonna, those are in a row anyway. So I think it's gonna work, um, nicely with the, the proposed reconfiguration of the retaining wall. So other than that, I think everything is, is still in place, uh, other than those items, but I think that's, that's the extent of, of what I have to present today.
I, I think that the, the, the early stages of this project, um, we were trying to pull as much back. Within the edge of the wetlands, basically, but. Um, and leaving as much greenery beyond the parking as possible on that level, plus. Uh, potentially some areas to, to pile snow. Cuz I don't think you can push that snow over the, over the wall now and onto that wetland area. So what you've taken is some retention areas away for, for snow, for snow removal, I think, in this. Um, so that's the only consideration. There's still, I suppose you'd have an upper and lower. Green area before, now you've just got a lower green area where the trees are. But you've lost the ability to pile snow on site. And I think that might come up as a question from the board, certainly as a question in my mind when I look at it. And I understand the, the nature of the wall being, um, straight and a straight run-in like. And certainly it's butters, the new, the recent builds on the other side, on that side of the street are all straight walls as well. Um, and, but anyways, um, that's the only effect I see is, is more snow storage than anything else.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, Jim, and I'm, I'm certain that will also come up when we go to conservation. They'll, they'll. Almost certainly have a condition for prohibiting us from dumping snow into the wetland and into, into the buffer. So it's not outside the realm of possibility that we may have to come back to the board after going through conservation. To modify that wall a little bit, to put a little more snow storage. Um, so I think that's, that's an open item.
All right, um, next, we put Peter on the frying pan now?
Everybody's dying to see what color this building is gonna be.
Let me, let me give an opening here.
Elliot, while, while, um, Jim is doing that, have you had a chance to compare the rendering to your plan? To make sure that we've captured the trees there properly?
Uh, yeah, we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to look at that a little bit closer.
Cause Chip is definitely eyeballing that. We have that coordination in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Peter, you're on.
Did you put Steve on? He's actually cut.
Oh, whoa, 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 I thought you were gonna do this yourself.
No, I get him to do that.
You can't do this by yourself?
I could, but he's, the packet, I'm, I'm set up on his, um, desktop, I believe, upstairs.
All right.
I can go up in his room.
See.
We did some research on the, uh, while, while Steve's doing that, we did some research on the, um. Hardy, Gordon Vatten, and also similar products to see if we could find. Uh, a yellow that was acceptable, uh, and came pre-finished. And it's, it's a hard animal to find. We, that Navajo. Um, tan or beige, uh, is, is the closest in hardy that comes pre-finished. We found, you know, the, the, the negative for Dana would be that we would have to buy the product primed and then paint it. Uh, which I think is a maintenance issue. So that's what's leading, whether it would be a funky yellow or a funky beige. If we don't go with the standard, it's just a maintenance situation that we were kinda beating up.
You mean to, to paint it?
Yes, to paint it. So we're trying to avoid that.
Yeah, I think, I, I think in the past, we, we certainly have. For the board's point of view, liked a hardy plank because it does have that long-term maintenance. Uh, you know, it's built into the pre-finished.
That's right. And, and, um, and it's a, I believe, uh, it's a fifteen-year warranty.
It is fifteen years, yeah.
Right, damn it, so, so agreeing with that and trying to understand. I, uh, to a few suppliers, just to say, is there another product similar that has a, a better, um. There isn't, really. So we did.
The other thing is, is what you show in a rendering versus the actual product.
Correct.
Color is a huge difference, so, um, this whole thing on samples and other sorts of things, we'll get a better sense of. Whether in fact, how close the rendering is, no matter what Steve's done, basically.
Well, that's true.
You know, so, anyway, go ahead.
We were talking about that, how you can look at it on one monitor and it's, looks perfect, and then you print it, it looks horrible, like, you know, depends on. How you're looking at it. So you're a hundred percent right. Getting the actual product, uh, color piece is gonna be important. Um, so that's what we've been looking at, um, internally. Also, we, we are, um, sensitive to the fact of the gables versus the hips on the front of the building. Our three D showed that the hips get very prominent in that building, I mean, gables. Um, even though we like them, right, we like the way they look, I think we're also realizing that maybe they're too prominent on the street. Uh, so we're gonna look at that today, uh, hopefully, Steve, are we?
Yeah, Jim, do you mind making me another, for some reason when I hit share, it doesn't when I hit share, it says I have nothing to share, so that's always a good sign.
So, so looking at this page, for instance, the, the two in the front, uh, versus the hips and, and I don't think, and, and I think we'll all agree, I don't think that the, the, uh, flat um, re, um, elevations actually tell the story, I think in this case, the three does a better job of how that works. Uh, here, you can see the gables looking very prominent. And then, and then realizing that the hips just set the building back, soften it a bit.
It's at less height too.
Correct, less height, so, so even though we want, we, it's a team like the gables, I think we're a good word that it's more sense to bring the hips back in the front. I would like, y- you know, I, I'd still like to keep the gable in the back, I think it's a totally different position. And only viewed by the residents anyway, but it's, it's the way it talks in there, I think it works.
Well, it gives a, uh, where the, where the uh, in this entrance basic, at the rear, it gives it more of a significant appearance in relationship to here, here I am, here's the entrance to the building at the rear. Yeah, I, I see what you mean.
Yeah, so, so we were hoping, keep it here, um, go back to hips, uh, in the, on the front elevation. Um, and, uh, again, just cuz we're looking, because we're looking at this rendering, I think making sure our coordination with, with Elliot be important. Um, make sure we've got every tree located as the plan does, um.
There was also a concern on that rendering of whether you could see the buildings next door or not.
Yeah, that's right, that was mentioned.
Yeah, I don't think, cuz if, if you looked at the site plan, Knights of Columbus is tucked way back here. Um, and then the, the retaining wall based off of Chris and Elliot's plan, you can start to see here, but I think the landscape's mostly gonna cover it. Um, and then obviously the, the tributary is kind of beyond where the, the rendering is, so. Um, and I had a chance to look at Elliot's plan, um, I, I think like ninety-five percent of it's there, I think the quantity is just you know, as people are working through in time, the quantity's just got a little bit lost, but I think overall, this is the more updated one, but I think ninety-five percent of the species and stuff are there, it's, you know, I think we're showing three blue spruce trees here, I think in reality it's five, so that, that's just a double check and we'll have to do. Um, and then obviously the crosswalk is a little bit shifted, so that'll get updated.
Peter, um, the, uh, those second floor bump outs on either side of the entry?
Yes.
The roofs on those? They, they, they're not heavy enough.
Yeah, they do look very clipped.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the window area down to the far right um, on the first floor, where the flowers are on this right side. It's got some, it's got some stature to it, those other ones have no stature at all. They, they, you're right, they look like they've just been sawed off, basically.
You see the difference, Steve, between the, the on?
The brackets and the
Flavor should come back up to those bays.
Well, they don't have to be bracketed, I think they just have to be heavier. You know, feel, feel like they, they cause an end to that bay. I mean, you got paneling there and the like, it, it needs just a little, a little bit more to bring it out.
Agreed.
All right. So, what else we got?
So Steve, go back to the rendering, we're just, I think, or, or you know what, let's look at the, um, the flat on elevations, because I think that helps these, yeah. So, so is this, Steve, is this the Navajo?
Yeah, it's the Navajo and then it's the, the pearl gray. Um, and I've got the, the Photoshop file up, this was the, the Navajo with the white. Um, and then starting to bring in the hardy plank palette.
So is, is it a yellow or is it a more a brown yellow?
So it, it's definitely more yellow, it's definitely, this is kind of the color that we're going for, so it's definitely a little bit more muted. Um, we had a conversation with Dana about actually going to a cobblestone, which is a little bit more of a tan, a little bit more muted.
That was for the, where the gray was gonna go though, Steve, not I was thinking of the, the gray being on the previous two buildings, the cobblestone was a gray-based color, but it has a little taupe in it. And I, I don't know if you had a chance to do that rendering, you know, I should have try to substitute that for the gray to see what it looked like.
Yeah, so we could actually look at it in real
It is really a gray-based color, it's just not quite gray, it's not a full gray. Jimmy, are you, wanna get away from the other two buildings, I mean, I, I'm just trying to, curious to where the gray was coming in.
Um, I, 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 I was more pushing for more of a yellow. Uh, but I think, uh, one of the things, and whether it's gray or some other, uh, lighter tone or something like that, I wanted something that was light, basically, so it wasn't as heavy. Um, do I have a concern about being too close to the buildings up the street? Um, yes and no. Uh, one, it ties the buildings together, which we're trying not to do. Uh, we want this to stand on its own, on the other hand, the other buildings are much flatter. This, this has more of a random nature to it, both in the color, which the other buildings don't have that random nature. So they have this random nature in the color and the architecture being, you know, coming in and coming out basically. And, and it has pitched roof, so, um, I guess I don't mind the gray, but I'd have to see it. How close is it to the, the butters? And if, if at all possible, I suppose, particularly before Wednesday uh, or the next hearing, basically, is can we get samples down to the, down to the um, building department, basically, so we physically, so people can physically see the colors that, that you're suggesting at this point. Um, both, both the yellow and, and, and the gray or or submit two grays, basically saying, it could be this gray or that gray, so we have a better sense as to um, uh, what you're, what you're looking at. We don't have to necessarily make the decision before that meeting, but it would be good to sort of have physical samples, so it can be part of next meeting's discussion.
I, I have been online quite a bit, looking at, I've, I've had a problem with the gray and the yellow, just my own eye, I didn't really like the combination, so I have been looking online quite a bit, I haven't found anything that really looked good together, I mean, a yellow and gray, uh, Peter had sent me a picture, was it yesterday, Peter? Yellow and gray, would, would you be able to share that possibly?
Yeah, I, I think so.
This what you're seeing right now is the Navajo with the cobblestone.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, so, you're getting a little bit of a tent, we actually, Pete, we might actually have that hardy catalog with the samples that we could bring down.
We can get it, but I think we, we as a team should put a palette together, so they can, you know, say, here's these three combinations, is these three combinations, so we're just open-ended with that, you know? We saw that building, I saw that building in, um, in Melrose, how, if I send that to you by email, Steve, can you bring it up on the screen?
Yeah, I should be able to.
And then I'm gonna send you the one I sent Dana, which was a home, but it was yellow and, and gray as well. And, and Dana, you didn't like it, I found it a little funky too, I think the gray and the yellow fight each other sometimes.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. I think that's why, um, you're searching for more of, you're searching for more of a tan gray, you know, there's blue gray, tan gray. I think it's tan gray, actually.
Yeah, if, if you go on the James Hardy website, they recommend these two colors together. I think because of the little bit of taupe that's in the gray on this cobblestone. I think they, I think they blend a little bit better, um, but, um, yeah, their pitch had told me a lot yesterday that you sent over. Uh, they just they do fight each other, I agree.
Saying that to Steve as well. That's a pretty soft gray, I mean, that gray is right, even though it was so fighting a bit. Did they come through, Steve?
Yeah.
So there, there's, that's the house I sent Dana. Um, you can see, it's a Cape Cod gray with a, with a yellow on the side.
Interesting.
Yeah, the front, well, I'm, I'm taking that kind of aside, that's the corner of the house, but obviously the, if you were in the front, all the pieces facing you were yellow, right?
Yeah.
Claps.
It is a little, the gray is a little dark.
And then, and then, yeah, and that's a Cape Cod thing, right, doing the claps in the front and the shingles on the side and rear.
Yeah.
We took a, we took a ride through our site, and we're seeing yellows, the blues, the tans, the white, the, the houses, right, kinda getting a feel for what is actually there. I, I mean, I'm not, I'm, I think not having a gray, this was, this is a very tan, this building is down, um, on Tremont Street in Melrose, near the high school. I mean, I don't like this at all, but I showed it to Dana, she's got an idea of what, what yellow might look like. And I don't, I don't know, this seems like it's not.
Do, do you remember, um, on that last project up the, up the street or one of those two's sister buildings? What was the gray color on there?
All the siding that we used?
Yeah.
Uh, we could look it up, but, um, I do, I mean, we have it, but exactly what it was.
I mean, I, I, I would rather not be that color, I, I mean, I, I guess I don't mind, mind this gray, subtle gray, basically.
Yeah.
With the white trim. I, I almost wonder whether that center section over the entry um, wants to be white, it stands out a little too much, maybe.
Let it be the, let it be the same color, the cobble, like the right and the left and the middle.
Maybe, I don't know. I mean, until you pour the color in there, you're not gonna know, but it just looks like it's kind of strong.
There you go, Steve did it for us.
That'd be the yellow, and the other way would be what, with the siding, if you did that in the siding, or you wanna keep that as a panel?
Um, oh, board and vatten versus the clap?
Yeah, what, what is that finished anyway, that, it would be just a flat panel? That wouldn't be either, e- either surface, correct, it wouldn't be boards and vatten, it would be just a flat panel?
Right, that was flat panel.
Yeah, har- Hardy makes a paneling that comes in four by ten-foot sheets, um, you probably can break that. Um, and then the, the seams or the reglets you can paint to match the color, so it all
And, and the, and the, in this particular case, it, it, uh, it gives it a different texture, it's the texture of the white uh, base on either side, but a different color, basically, so it tones it down, doesn't shout at you, but it, uh, it, uh, creates a canvas basically of the two sides and the centerpiece wrapped around the entry.
Steve, try it in the cobble color, the middle panel. So Jim, for, for the building department, should we see if we can bring down at the actual pieces of the hardy and the color? Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and even if, if, if you're undecided on the cuz it sounds like you only have one choice when it comes to hardy, but if, even if you're undecided on the grays to get the grays that you think you, you might wanna see.
Yeah.
Now, is that a gray, it looks, well, I guess because it's not, uh, uh, clapboard, basically, it, it gives it a different appearance.
Yeah. But I like that it breaks it, though, breaks the right and left, I don't know if it's gonna be hips, but kind of sets them apart.
I, yeah, it does, I mean, the whole, the whole elevation of this thing looks like a bunch of houses, that, row houses, basically, in some ways.
Yeah.
I don't know about that, but it's certainly worth pursuing.
So maybe we can come up with a name to be, um, I, I think we could, right, a, a palette. Um, at least for, for this, go around and get it to the, uh, building department.
Yeah.
And then that'll bring it up for discussion on Monday today.
Okay.
Peter, is that something you want me to track down, or you, or you're gonna track down the colors?
I believe we can track it down, although hardy can be, um, tough, because we're not a purchaser. Sometimes they don't really wanna talk to us, but if we have an issue, we'll reach out to you. Help us get the sample.
Yeah, I mean, I could probably go through more, another, uh, some of our vendors that we typically buy hardy from, um,
Ri- right, if, if you could, and get us, um, the samples, then we can put together the, the, um, the, the two schemes, right, and we'll get it down to the building department.
Yeah, if you want it, just submit me the colors and then I'll, um,
Okay.
I'll actually talk to my salesmen as soon as we get out of this meeting. And, um, uh, I'm pretty sure we can get them fairly quickly.
Okay.
So, um, on other things, I think you said earlier, that, um, um, you're gonna provide a materials and color package? Or are we just, just, just for the moment, we're just dealing with the colors at the front of this, or is there a bigger, is there bigger pieces coming here, because I, looking back at my notes, there was discussion on pavers? Um, the shingles, the fencing, certainly the bike rack, but you know, cuts of different things, basically, should we not start that even with, even with this as a parallel?
No, I think we should, for what we know, for instance, we can pick the roof, we could, we can pick the lights, we have picked the light fixtures on the building, the fixtures for the parking lot. Um, I think what we know, we should, like, we should submit cuts if we know it.
Yeah, that would, that would help, cuz we're trying to get as much of this stuff out of the way as possible.
Right.
And if we can, if you've got the window to talk to the board, you got the window to sort of cross off some of these things and put them aside. Uh, and narrow the, narrow the information down, the other thing was beyond TIC was, uh, O and M and, O and M and, uh, basically that manual base, uh, O and M um, submission, uh, or start that process as well.
So, so Jim, with the pavers, would, uh, would they want actual pavers, or they just wanted brochure, uh, seen?
We, we've done, um, Peter will basically do, um, single sheet part of the, part of the, some, part of the overall submission, which is generally um, images, basically, so an image of light fixture, some specification information on it, potentially uh, image of the pavers, if you were doing brick, there would be an image of the brick, sometimes we'll ask basically for, um, or it actually, I don't think so much we ask, but depends on, someone will bring a belt of brick, basically. Um, to the meeting or, you know, to the building department, but yeah, there, there you go, right there, so you know, whatever you're using for materials, windows, stuff and so on. So it's, it's part of the sheet, basically, it's part of the documentation submission. So it's, it's part of the sheet, basically. It's part of the documentation submission. It becomes part of the sign-off as well.
Okay.
But I think in some cases, like we're talking about right now with the Hardy, and particularly the fact that uh, you can't get the, quite the right color rendition, basically. It would be, um, it would be, have a sample, basically, with a name on it. But it would still be shown up on that submission that, that was just put up, so we'd see that as well. Um, on the landscape, there probably is a sheet, basically, for the board. Now, Chip understands the landscape, at least the, the breeds of trees and stuff like that. But the rest of the committee, even myself at times, basically, all right, we see the name, but we don't understand what it exactly looks like, some, some cuts of, of the different types of materials that are being used on there pictorially. Would be part of the package as well.
Okay.
So I don't know, I've got, I don't know that I have anything else. Tom, you?
No, I think all my notes have been covered.
Okay.
But one, one thing, um, Jim, do we, have we seen the letter from Bill Renault? What he's looking for offsite?
No, no, this is new information.
Okay.
And that will have to be submitted to the board anyway, so.
That was, that was submitted quite a while ago, Jim, at the beginning of the project.
Well, when you say, but, uh, uh, aren't we talking about uh, these additional funds basically you spent elsewhere? Is that in a, the original package?
Yes.
Okay, then we must, then our chairman must have it.
Okay, and he's got all the information you talked about, Chris, with the, the connections to the, uh, catch basins and the crosswalk location with the, uh, beacons and all that. So we have not submitted it yet to Bill. I wanted to make sure that we, we were okay today. Um, and then, um, and then I'm gonna forward it right along to Bill now.
Okay, so, so, you know, Jesse's gonna have to pull together a package to submit um, on the Friday before the meeting, basically. So let's make sure that all this material's in there um, as much as possible, so that we can get some of this stuff talked about and, and taken off the list of need to have.
Like a plan.
Okay.
Elliot, for your bike rack, can you put a cut sheet together or an inside picture of what you're planning on using back there?
Yes, I'll do that.
Great.
All right, I guess we're done. So I unless, unless someone wants to bring anything else up. Um, so I'm ending this, uh, at, um, eleven thirty-eight. Um, I'm closing this special meeting with the zoning board, a review committee on five ninety-six North Ave. And I guess the next time we see you will be at our hearing with the zoning board. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good time. See ya.
Thank you.
All right.